This will stand this morning, our guest pastor is Pastor Mason Teal from the Spring Mordelet Church of Christ. Pastor?
Well, Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for the rain that you've sent us. We ask the Lord that we honor and take care of each other, that we show love to one another. We ask that we discuss these things and you give the commissioners wisdom and the ability to be able to discern between right and wrong and to make the best decisions for the community. Lord, in everything we ask that we honor and glorify your name and it's the Jesus name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. But the reasons to the life of the United States of America and to the love of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with God in us, with all.
Welcome everyone here this morning. Have a couple of announcements to make. Commissioner Dampson's out of town, so he will not be with us today. And somebody told me just before the meeting started that Commissioner Page was birthday today.
Oh, I know.
I'm surprised, but say happy birthday to him, but um...
No, I'll excuse you.
How old are you? Forty-five? Forty-five?
Forty-five.
I know.
Okay. I'm three approved of the agenda. We have a add-on, and that will be Tim A., Scott Mixon Public Affairs Manager, Ted Thompson Program Manager, Georgia Pacific, Colleen Douglas Mills to provide a quarterly update on the Tim Holloway House Line Construction project. Are there any other changes or additions to be amended this morning? If not, is there a motion to approve, please, or by the committee?
Not to approve, sir.
We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Consider items four through eight. Anybody have anything about the considered items?
I'd like to ask number eight, we need to talk and ask the question, or do you approve?
Okay.
Do you want to see the number eight, sir?
Yes. Let's first see, let's talk about it as it is on the agenda, take it off. Probably don't discuss anything that's not, take it off, okay.
I move to approve all of them, this time Ted Thompson.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. We'll have the number eight.
The reason I asked the number eight, they removed, is that our four properties will have two which is funded by CHILs and two which are funded by CDBG funds. They see it as threshold. So, what's been after us is we approved the standard city and earthquake costs for both CHILs and CDBGs. Now, I'm looking at the properties to name the people. I believe I'm not incorrect if I say that CDBG funds can't be used on houses that are in a flood zone. Am I correct in that part, Lieutenant?
I believe so. There is a restriction.
All right. I have a particular that for more than three years, his house in law is currently in a flood zone. I have had, or asked, now put that in the description, this gentleman, and I was told that he was qualified for CDBG funds, which allows some money to be spent on the house. He doesn't want a new house, he wants the house to be renovated a little. He's getting floored on the dirt. And then I was told it couldn't spend up to half of what it would cost to repair. And it's been set down, that property is thirty-eight thousand. Half of that, nineteen, so he did say, I went to the gentleman, and I said, from what I've been told, he was qualified, filled out paperwork and everything for, for nineteen thousand dollars, which is half of thirty-eight thousand. Yes, for my part, this man, he's here, I'd just like to know, and I see his name card, I'd like to know where we are on this, because I know where we are, we ain't done anything. I spoke to Danny Muddman, goes to telephone, it's really very ruining. I'm waiting for his contract to come up, so I can go against him. But, you know, we ought to be system, we ought to come and audit. Sorry, your paperwork isn't still in the right, making you make too much money, or, you know, whatever it is, but I just wanted to have this taken off, so that on record, that this man's commissioner is not satisfied in the service that he's got. I think he's pretty fair.
I'll follow up on that, and then I'll, I will reach out to DSC myself and see if I can get some explanation on that for the case.
I'll, I'll, we're ready, I'll act, I'll explain. Well, let's deal with that. All right, that's all. I'm moving.
I would ask, ask to, Mr. I'm a constituent on Ellison Road, and she, I took the application to him, he filled it out, and was told that we couldn't help him, he called people, said a flood zone, you know exactly where I'm talking about. And, why is it this? I mean, he was coming down, we're getting in the flood zone. So, if CDBG can be used for the flood zone, why hasn't somebody in the last three years that I, I had me up here, said, oh, yeah, we can help you. I mean, it seems like it's pushed away on a door, a thumb in the brother's hand, and that's the end of it. And it seems like to me, if someone fills out that application, asks him for help, and he truly needs help, the same with this constituent, why isn't it except right there and say, okay, let's see how we can help this person? Now, I don't know who's like the line model, but I'll follow up.
That's, that's an issue, I think. Thank you for, for, for...
And I know we have another funding cycle coming up for CDBG where we can apply for additional funds. So, it may be an issue with the funding cycle, but I'll follow up on both of those.
We're not letting you in, but you already got our thing.
Okay. Yeah, well, you know, my issue is, it's been there now about three years, and it, and it's still forgotten. And so, it's still on file, it's still, it needs help. Thank you.
No, I'll make a motion to approve, the consent is out of number eight, and we just discussed, not for this morning.
We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Subject request, number nine. The board should consider approving a draft resolution opposing changes to the existing trout regulations by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, SFC, as intended by Don Brad, President of the Taylor County Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Development.
Um, I'm requesting that you read the previous resolution to do, to the Department of Fish and Wildlife Commission in regards to some of the proposed changes that they have, they have favored in the last couple of meetings. Do I need to read it?
Well, I was going to ask for a motion to read this resolution in its entirety. Martha's calling from my office now. Okay, anybody can read this, and you want to read it? Let me, let me ask for a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor to, to authorize him to achieve.
There's comrades.
That we ask our attorney to read the resolution in its entirety.
We're all number nine. We say the motion.
The motion.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Certainly.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries.
Number nine, yeah. Okay. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners voicing opposition to the proposed trout regulations by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County are informed that SFC State Department is considering changes to the trout rule for the Denny area. And whereas our county relies strongly on tourism, which includes golfing, fishing hunting, birding, and kayaking, economic impact of tourism on our areas over sixteen million dollars annually. And whereas if the proposed trout rule changes were to be adopted, it would be crippling our local captain's, we have over forty that operate in our area. And whereas Taylor County benefits from trout season, and its citizens from all of the state and out of the state come to Taylor County to visit. And whereas the season is an economic health of Taylor County Guard. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County are charged with assisting its citizens in these economic times. Therefore, we have resolved by the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners that they strongly oppose the change to the trout regulation, passed in regular session twenty-second day of October two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Can you all feel the tone now? I feel very strongly that we will see some of our requests at the next meeting. I don't think that all of them are going to pass. I'm hoping, okay? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve, please?
Aye.
We've got a motion for a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Complimentary officers of the governmental units from the county sheriff's way, tangent to the case, and that's a brief presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. You gonna give us some more?
Yes, please. My girlfriend gets all the family.
Oh, nice.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you for helping us working together and being a part of the community. We're certainly going to continue the track that we're on. We've dealt with our fight, doing all of our drug, drug wars. We're still moving forward. Hopefully, we make that, we can see that on the streets. We continue to work, you know, we like to work with our school board, school superintendent, and we thank them for that. That's our own service. We got, uh, deficits in every school, with the director down to make sure our paperwork gets done on time, that's mandated in the state. But I just want to thank the board and each commissioner for being a part of us being successful. We wouldn't make it without, that is the same thing.
Sure, Pastor, you've done a, a great job. Out in the community, I hear good things about you. Just really proud of you, staying upon the drugs problem, and we appreciate what you've done and your, your officers and staff have done for the community. Do you have any kind of statistics? I know that we've seen lots and lots of remarks in the paper, and there's a lot of them, some not having even been in the paper. Just...
I, I just have UCR up on, I don't have them with me, but I can get them and have them brought back over to the next commission meeting. And I know Marty Maywood, do you remember some of them, sir?
I, I thought I forgot my head. I know that we have a decrease in property in certain areas that, uh...
Preciously, thirty-five percent.
Yeah, with the DUI and aggressive driving grant that we got, we saw like eighty-five percent decrease in traffic to alleys, stuff like that.
And drug deaths.
You can get Maywood, open your envelope, Madam Chair.
She got a beer off, she got a big one, but he's...
Why is it cut there?
We just want to, we just want to say thank you, you know. We know we had to take a two and a half percent budget cut, we tied it up, we got a chin off the desk, and we made some things happen that, uh, we just want to say thank you for what you did for us.
But we do have money. This is a check to the Board of County Commissioners from the sheriff for four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. I think it was all for a picture.
Well, I want to say, you see, I think that should deter any violence, say, I can't win this, but that would put me straight out the gates.
That's hard to pick him in pace.
It does, that's an opt check.
Picture is.
Now, we didn't have any truck checks, we go with that one, we didn't do checks.
Yeah.
Uh...
But you can give me a second.
Come on, Mark.
Oh, no, this is, this is for you guys.
Of course.
Right here, square, tell us where.
Okay, Matt, you want to present that, that check?
This is true.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. You got anything you want to add? Yeah, just one, one quick thing, just tonight. It's in terms of jail, I don't think we had to make any budget amendments this year for medication or for inmate medical care this past year, so that's a, a first time in several years. So, I just want, want that out, too, that we were able to amend that as well.
Well, we've just got that meth problem, and I know we all are working on that, and we look forward to seeing some more meth in the paper.
We find new locations every day. We got information yesterday, another new location, but we're, we're, our road transport is still definitely working.
Anyway, I think, I was reading this weekend about this meth and everything, and they were talking about how several years ago, they were making it, you know, but they're saying now that, that large quantities are coming up from Mexico.
They make it cheaper, they're shipping it cheaper now, that is better than meth.
And they were talking about how many thousands of pounds are coming, getting in waters, and that, imagine how much it's worth. This is shocking to me.
See marijuana is always Mexico cash flow, that's why they park them. With the United States, it's like everyone's getting legal on marijuana, that's their way to combat that, they're trying to push that meth, they're pushing it over there, right and left, they give it to these guys, they get it on the ground, and then, of, and then, of course, we got, they run it like a business, they're like a net corporation.
Yes, yeah, but one thing, they said, that they said that, that a lot of those communities, the cartel runs that community, and the police department means nothing, that they actually run it, and they go around the police, they kill them, and that they just take them over. I, I was just amazed by that.
Fortunately, and that's just what they're looking at, they don't really know the whole picture of that. We're starting to continue to do our job to combat in our areas.
Well, keep up the good work, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good question. How many dogs do you have?
Dog, yes, yes.
And we do have that canine assistant from the ground up, of course, that is sitting
there after some, and we've got to certify that on, on the job, and just start seeing more, the curable about it. It took us about two years to get it, and we finally got the cattle. Everything's going, going our way. A lot of more questions, boys.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay for the next item, Commissioner, if you...
All right, let's move on.
Yes.
All right, can we go to item number eleven?
Yes, because I don't think, Scott Mixon, we don't need to table that item, please. Oh, we're going to table, okay, come on ahead, and I, uh, we're going to table Tim A. And I'm a general business, number eleven, the water was stopped feeding on Lake Town Road, and take possible action as a gentleman, Commissioner Page.
I did a different request, if you make sense to the women on Front Turn Road. Is Nancy Bauder here, or anybody on Front Turn Road? I don't figure. I had this lady, she was just, and me doing something, and I'm not the law person for this county, but she wanted me to do something to stop the flea. She was going down a little two block long street, uh, endangering her children. And I first looked at Officer Weber in the Sheriff's Department, asked about speed sign, and it was not in a state of physical care. And he promised me some surveillance, and he still wasn't asking, he wanted speed bumps, and I don't know, lots of. Asked a lot of the slow children play sign at the end of the street, which used to be used as a cul-de-sac. So, somebody cut fence and went in, into the road to the mobile home. And finally, I searched the sheriff's office, but Marty and Officer Lee, and they said, we'll take care of it. Officer Lee said, I know this lady personally, I will go out there and talk to her, and I'll sure you, I'll take care of it. I've heard anything from Turn Road since?
No, sir, we have not heard anything from Turn Road. Buddy Lee himself has been out there morning, night, several different times, not made contact with anybody that's been on the road. Hasn't been able to make contact with the complainant either, so, but he's been out there himself personally several times, and we, we've not gotten any other complaints from Turn Road.
I haven't gotten any other complaints either. And we do not have a policy of speed humps, and I'm not bringing down the speed humps, some of those, that are, I call them bikes, and, and, you know, they're, they're a way to slow them down, either. Maybe we need a policy, including that policy, if you want a speed hump, and stop all the major collector roads. You think, like, get all the people along the road this time.
I think we just have a draft policy that includes that language, but it has not been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Um, I, I think because of, you know, some questions that we had about speed humps, and if that was something we wanted to pursue.
We want to pursue instead of workshop, or...
Do you want to?
Well, I don't know, what do you think, you know?
Nobody.
We've gone hard, we already got a draft, let's talk about it a little bit. Man, if we get a call, Marty, we'll send the board, we're doing the following speed humps, all right, but I was, wasn't supportive, because we're going to have to talk the county in months. I actually was wanting to ask you a question, you know, on a collector road, like, these roads, they've been cursed, let's speed humps there, and we need to be there , like, those types, where a county officer spends the money more. But in all relative strength, just because you want one, well, if it doesn't, you know, if everybody thinks of anybody else on the street, and if everybody along that street agrees to it, you think, Mark, I'm fine with, who will accept?
Yeah, we'll talk about it in our next, I'm looking.
And Mark, tell Buddy, thanks.
Yeah, what's this, Paul, woman?
Appreciate that, man.
And don't not give that out, because he get a lot of calls about that.
I'll get it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Page. Um, so, could you please, to discuss Turn Road, just want to remind y'all that tomorrow, I'll be going to Pittsburgh County for the second in-force task force meeting. Uh, I've been, you know, studying this, and I'll have quite a bit of input, and, I just, there's just not enough of data, in my opinion, out there right now, for us to be making any kind of opinions, really, for the report or against it. However, I do believe that it's a done deal, and I think that it will be coming. The governor and the senate president, uh, was very much for it, it passed through the legislature this year, the first session that the governor rejected, so I, I feel like this is a done deal. So, my path, I think, is to make sure that I work with these people to ensure that Taylor County gets some benefit from it. If it's going to come through here, then I will be pushing hard to see some benefit for us, and to try to minimize the negative impact. So, um, citizens are welcome to go at the end of the meeting, starting at four thirty tomorrow. You can speak last time in Tampa, when we started that, we listened for two hours, they had everybody there speak for three minutes, and it took about two hours, so, that's how many people were there, but they, you know, the public was encouraged to get involved, to come to the meeting. Also, I have, uh, talked with Lawanda and reached out to, uh, Kenneth Dudley, to, uh, for him, to, uh, for his input. He's our engineer, and I think that, uh, he is just the one that, that I need to be talking to as this rolls along. So, I really appreciate Lawanda and any help, or anybody, really, but especially with our engineer. So, that's kind of, enough, maybe on, are there any questions about this, what's going on or anything?
I have one thing to know, correct? You know more about this than I do. Rosemary Wood, you know, Rosemary, it's...
And what's she using?
Yeah, I mean, Rosemary, yeah, Rosemary Wood. She works for an engineering firm called Atkins, she's a fast worker. And I saw her recently, and she said, I think Atkins is going to get the contract. So, doing the study on the route and all that, and I'm pretty sure we're going to get it, I don't know how she felt about it. She said, I'll leave your go-to person for any information. If you need to know anything about, about turn bike, you can call many people. So, that's all, Rosemary Wood. Tell her to, drive me on there.
Sure, and I, I like to give her contact information. Also, Ryan Atkins, that grew up in Taylor County, is one of this FDOT group, and, so, I look forward to, uh, for him if he wants to. Uh, yeah.
More probably, three, four, five rows, um, this is a question. I know at the first meeting, they said that they were not planning on televising the future of task force meetings.
But that was what?
They were not, they were not planning on televising the Board of County Commissioners the first time. You know if they reconsidered that?
I have not heard anything, and I probably get everything that I could.
I didn't hear anything. I, I know they specifically were asked that question at the first meeting, and they said that they were not planning on televising. I was disappointed with that. I used the Board of County Watch up at the meeting, but I was hoping that maybe they said something that they were...
Yeah, I'll, um, you know, of course, I'll be there tomorrow, but when I get there, I'll ask, you know, I'll talk to that one. But, you know, it's kind of amazing.
Yeah, I bet. Between festival and my P job, unfortunately, everything's down, but I was hoping that maybe they were ever to do, have to do something like that, maybe for each meeting.
And I'll, I'll bring that, this is some information that I can, I'll bring it back, of course, and share with everybody. And I'm, I'm sure that somewhere there'll be, uh, a transcript or minutes or something that the public, you know, can read. But, um, lots and lots of questions about this contract, and, and few answers right now. I mean, you know, if I ran out of the agenda for tomorrow, it still looks like an overview. We're going to go back over that sometime law again, Boy Better Not, and, um, they're going to go back over, uh, some questions that were sent in, a lot of people, a lot of you question. And then, it seems like another overview, I'm not sure exactly when we'll get to the nuts and bolts, but I'm going to be asking that question tomorrow. Okay. Um, I'm certain the Board has further discussed the resolution of intent, proposed solid waste assessment changes, as amended by the county magistrate. This really exposed to the, on that item, he did prepare the resolution of intent. I know, do you have any other information or any updates about this, before we, before we decide?
Thank you. Um, Danny and I had a discussion with, um, Ms. Tenoda, I'm a telephone on, um, October the seventeenth. But what this resolution is, is just a resolution of intent. Um, it's the first in the process of giving back your, uh, want to, um, you know, execute or do, the liability rating, especially the revenue, or, just all the way, uh, you know, she sent one, and I, I redid it to conform with our needs, uh, per some of the office requests. This doesn't mean that you're going to do it, this just means that the first step in, in doing it, um, and you had to do it, uh, it was going to be advertised in December.
November?
Pardon?
November.
November. Um, again, uh, special assessment, I, I have a lot against, of, of that special assessment, so I have a few, I haven't been doing, but I've been so long. Um, and if y'all recall, uh, the, uh, number one, when we went down to Dixie County, Ms. Tenosa said, that, that, in fact, you needed to do a study. Um, and the public about what the intent will be on that. But if you pass this resolution, it does not mean that, that you're gonna do it, that you're gonna do it. Uh, this is just, um, uh, being a step in and, yeah, get it, step in and, get it. Uh, and, uh, when I was on the phone, um, Amy and Ms. Tenosa had a discussion, I don't know that Ms. Tenosa understood the fact of what Amy made with the same. And I'm gonna let her tell you what, uh, Amy wants to do about her, her views with regard to what she talked with Ms. Tenosa about. Um, and, and so, and so, um. So, all this is, again, is just the initial step, that's all it is. Um, and you can decide, uh, if you wanted to do it, um, later on, um. And again, I will say one other thing, yes, with special assessment, number one, it has to be a benefit property, and it has to be, um, equally spread out. It has to extend this, this piece of property, this piece of property. And, um, and there's numerous, numerous things along that, you know, from the beginning, time, and started in the first place.
Well, I, I think last meeting, we, we all, we still all, and, um, it was the consent of sort of words at that time, that we wanted to have a resolution. And we all understand that that resolution does not say that we're gonna do it or not do it. It's just like you say, it's that first step, because we have caught, uh, missed that, because it's things that we have not done. Uh, obviously, the people knew it, but we have forgot it. We have a lot of, of, um, orders, and all that, sometimes it takes a while and we forget about them. So we just wanna put something in place, so if we decide to do this, we done do do it. We done, we taken all the steps that we, that are necessary to do it.
This is kind of, I think one of the things that she said is that she recommended the board do it, just in case you didn't do it like Starwood, that was hard. I guess she didn't feel like I was told the record, but I looked back in Paul's records from nineteen ninety and it was done, so it was.
Did it correctly?
We did it correctly, yes.
Okay.
I guess she didn't feel like I had the record from nineteen ninety.
I knew we had it, you get them, for sure. You'll often notice there's a notice that I attached to the, uh, best, you know, in the newspaper. It was, uh, be published November eleventh, seven, eight, twenty-four, twenty-five, December first, September second.
Had you, had you, you did that notice, had you determined that notice will, we have to be sent to everybody, given a second by our schedule? If that's the case, the board needs to be looking at cause, just like.
That was my next question.
Yes.
If this, if this serves as notice, or what? If we have to send notices to every, every percol of our in Taylor County?
If you're ready, you're gonna have to.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have to send the notice.
On this?
On this.
Yes.
You know, if, if we take action later, say, maybe calendar year.
Pursuant to this act.
Pursuant to that, if we want to know this.
Yeah, I, I think we don't have to.
Okay, yeah. You wanna read this, Matt Tyler?
Oh, yes.
I'm at your pleasure.
I bet you most of you, we actually read this, read this, Matt Tyler, okay.
Now, most of them are second, all the same thing on, all the same time, most of the characters.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution in Taylor County, Florida, collecting, using the uniform method of collecting non-avalanche. Special assessments led within the tiny corporate area of Taylor County, Florida, saying a need for such places, providing for the mailing of this resolution and providing for effective date.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to pass this resolution?
Motion to pass, real good.
I'll make sense.
There we go, a motion on second, all the same thing on.
Aye.
All the same same time, most of the characters, something, yeah.
One other thing, I, you know, it says mailing, so that might, somebody might misinterpret that, but if you look on the, um, um, number three of the, um, of the resolution. It says, upon adoption, county courts, there by a register, send a copy of this resolution. I didn't have to take it out to the, to the Department of Revenue and Tax Collector and Popery, right? That's the mailing they're talking about, not mailing you have to.
Okay.
Have the honor.
Thank you.
So I didn't want anybody, I mean, I'll explain through that.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, uh, so, uh, this will be across the, the month of November?
Yes. And then, um, it'd be approved December first, and then that will be, the January deadline, after it's approved.
County terminal fourteen, the board should continue discussion of proposed vaping to back the order, read as in from October the seventh, twenty nineteen.
I, I, this is what I, uh, okay, I wanna make sure I understood correctly. You know, we had to be, 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 um, be ordered, and y'all decided that maybe you jumped the gun a little bit. And I took it, I handed it over here, and I thought it was done, so we weren't gonna, y'all wanted anything more on. Then there was a discussion about the setting up some time. And I thought, then what happened?
You didn't know what happened, huh?
Yeah, so, I said, I'm not gonna do any more vaping, or hence it, unless later on y'all tell me to do it. So, um, I matched y'all's pleasure with regard to that. Uh, the last, you know, the last one I did listed the various, um, places, if we were as cozy as we possibly could, put in the various places where you couldn't do vaping and so forth. And like I said, I, I thought I understood that correctly, that we're just gonna, uh, not do anything, just get the time, set, set up some time.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, I, I think we need it in order for these signs, and the only question was being that, that, that was, were, were there gonna be any penalties associated with it? And we talked about some pretty hefty, to me, maybe outrageous penalties, and we came back and said, well, you know, that may be a little extreme, and, and also with the county employees, um, and like with the roll off side. I mean, you know, you can't, you're not gonna stop that, you can't be out there putting people in jail with a little offside, so.
Twenty-five dollars?
That was, that was the last one that I did, twenty-five dollars presented to y'all. What I did was the last one, uh, Malcolm, was twenty-five dollars penalty. I also provided that the code enforcement officer could, in fact, uh, give the, the citation. I did the form of the citation in the order, and also, in other words, in other words, in the first one I did, you know, rate the penalty, but also if you wanted the same penalty, you know, first you kept doing it. So it's twenty-five dollars.
Couple of years.
And, uh, that, that was the last one I did. Um, again, with regard to that, there was also some discussion, I think, about what's the state gonna do. I don't know whether, you know, they're meeting early this year, I don't know whether they're going to, to do something, you know, they very well might pass something and say, you county, you can't do anything, we're gonna take, take over, you know, totally. I don't know if they're gonna do that and so forth, so, that's another issue. That was one of the reasons why y'all were wanting to go ahead, at the start, to get yours done prior to that, as, as I, as I recall. But like I said, whatever y'all wanna do, you just tell me, um, the computer's ready to go.
I thought, you know, I thought they didn't want to come under home rules, but they'll, we found that, um.
Oh, I agree.
You know, but I'm okay with a twenty-five dollar penalty, if you don't have some kind of penalty, why even waste the money on a car? But I'm, whatever this board wants to do, I'm okay.
I'm satisfied with twenty-five dollars, though, but I would like, we're gonna pass the order, uh, this is just some conclusion. Um, some of our major parks, the Forest House, I still got all, you know, about the rocks, you know, that, and, and, the parks. And I wish it wouldn't be interfering with the roll off side, and it's gonna be safe to start with, from getting over here in the morning and having cigarettes. You can't smoke inside a building anyway. I don't think in that list I would include if I was in Kansas County, but, you know, I mean, I don't, you're right. Whatever, smoking is a big issue there, or vaping.
So, just the county parks?
Yes, the county.
How much so?
Well, let's see, we can name them, Austin Park, Austin, Sports Complex. Yeah, yeah, not, not Park.
Aspen Springs?
Aspen Springs is a park.
Jay Brook?
Jay Brook, is a park.
Jay Brook Park?
Community Center.
What about, uh, parks associated or attached to schools, or set near the school?
City County Park.
Or, or all parks would be included, you know.
Oh, no, we can pass the roll off, it's a lot of things, yeah.
About Green Happy Park?
Green Happy Park. There continues to be center in parks, community center parks, another.
And we're missing? I don't believe so, but we have, we have a list.
Go through the list, and if we list another one off, or one or two, and two, that's smoking and vaping. This is about products, well, we don't deal with alcohol in there.
It's, so you want no tobacco products or vaping, or smoking? Cause back products could be used, like.
Be used.
Okay.
Now, it's all right, you admit it, you're right. Don't, don't press it, right?
Could alcohol and smoking, vaping, as often used with back products? You wanna make, you wanna make a motion?
I don't make that motion.
Okay, you wanna make?
That's the last one, that requires to do the order. The motion that I will make is that we ask our attorney, okay, just throughout the order, visiting, smoking and tobacco products and vaping at following county parks. And this county park, so, community center, Sports Complex, Green Happy Park, Aspen Springs Park, South Side Park, the Mount on.
Uh-huh.
Austin Park. And that's it, y'all?
The, uh, E B, E B Park.
E B Code Park.
Would you use, uh, community center with the, community center park?
Community Center Park.
Community Center Park, and, and.
Green Happy Community Center Park.
And Park. Is that a wrong name? The Park?
I think that's a good.
And that's definitely, would be twenty-five dollars. I'm just, I'm just being, like, twenty dollars? Twenty-five? You're not going with that, anybody, it's a cost.
Okay, do you want to include or capital parts?
Four, yeah.
Oh, no. That, the only issue with that is it would be, it would probably be difficult to, the floors during our festival. And I know they have a, they did put up signs and ask people not to smoke at, at the stage, correct, Mark?
Mark, um, I'm, I don't know, I'm trying to come up with my own complaint here, but being involved here has been very political. I know the policy typically, if they put up no smoking times around concert areas, because where people are most congregated, um, there aren't a lot of communities on, on that property, so, there are gonna be their twenty-four seven, so, it would be, of course, a little political. Um, but we do, the task to make sure, and we do keep an eye out, and the security and the law enforcement there, to do someone that's smoking in there and making point, um, is typically in the case of that. I don't, I was personally not aware of any issues that we've had regarding with smoking and making point about it. That's, that's not advocating any way to provide any actual.
If you've got RVs there, if you want to go inside your RV, but, but you don't wanna go back anyway. Um, that one, something here, you, what you don't think, you put it down a little bit?
There's no designated section for smoking, is it? Well, it's basically dump hook where it is, and then you, as far as the bomb, you're supposed to, the board would be on that. But you designated a non-smoking area? Yes, okay. We, uh, we partner with the health department, and they give us time, then they're typically out there providing information, while people just. Or designated either way to have a non-smoking section, the board, or a tree and a non-smoking, so I think that.
How about Canada?
Do them do it then.
They definitely support capital part. If it's counted for, it'll come back and do it again. And all that page, where the head reference to you, the center and party, okay, we got.
Y'all write that all down and email me that, right?
Yeah, we got a motion, is there a sound?
Sound.
Motion is set, all the papers say aye, all the time, same time, most of the characters. Moving on, county administrator, aye, on the fifteenth, county administrator, to Dr. National, aye.
We want to remind the board that, um, our Veterans Day luncheon is scheduled for November the eleventh at twelve-thirty at Forest Apple Park. Um, we can leave indoors in the event of any inclement weather. We're, um, working very hard to, um, to create a nice event for our veterans and honor them.
In the past, the board has been asked to contribute, um, do you have enough funding this year to take care of it?
We do, okay, we've had some very, um, very nice donations, um, and I believe we reached out to y'all to see if you'd like to help serve, or make a donation, or start helping in place. And we will, um, put our notice for that. That is a county holiday, but we have county staff who are volunteering at the time.
Yeah, I always, I like to do a few tickets.
I'm not able to hear about them for you.
Yes, sir.
I understand we have a theater company, so.
Yes.
I can't help, so, I'll, I'll.
Thank you. Um, and we also have a workshop scheduled for the twenty-ninth. If you have any topics for the attendees, reach out to us Saturday, Friday, so we can get out, um, the package and, and the meeting.
And we're gonna be, only, only, only agenda is the recovery, uh, what we're gonna do, okay?
Speed up. Three years, speed up, so.
We'd also like to bring you our draft five-year capital improvement plan. We need to, um, finalize that, um, it helps us with grant points. We need to have that finalized prior to January fifteenth, so I'd like to complete that process with me, and so we'll bring that information as well.
Okay, and would you, uh, would you look at that, right, on Aspen Springs at that time, also?
Yes, yes, of course.
Anything else? Is all? Thank you, thank you. Number sixteen, comments and concerns from the public for non-feminine, anybody? Number seventeen, board at the National, Mr. Lundy? Mr. Page?
I have nothing to do this one, um.
Mr. Lee? Anybody else? Appreciate everybody being here.
I, on the desk is the next audit, so I'd be close to the lettering, so we'll need to pay attention to the lettering, and also schedule a, funds that we do like, that we should pay, again.
Okay.
Look at it and see what we'll do.
All right, thank you. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Who is your, sorry?
On number seven, all the papers say aye?
Aye.